Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you all to the public hearing for the Issaquah Highlands Retail Site Development Permit, the Issaquah Highlands Medical Office Administrative Site Development Permit, and the Issaquah Highlands Self-Storage Administrative Site Development Permit. Before we get started with our public hearing portion of the meeting, we have some approval of business that the commission has to take care of. We've got four different minutes, nights of minutes, that we have to approve, so I hope you've had a chance to read through those. Does anybody have any corrections or edits that they'd like to make note of? Could I get a motion of...
Mr. Chairman, would we approve the minutes of the September 26, 2018?
This may be out of order, but I do have to lodge an objection to the very existence of the minutes, as well as to their accuracy. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding. We have a court reporter who's taking down what was actually said. The minutes are someone's summary of what that person thinks was and was not important. That kind of summary has no place in a quasi-judicial proceeding and is simply going to complicate the record on appeal, and I object to any entry. If you feel compelled to enter minutes, then I would encourage you to have minutes that simply say when we began, when we ended, who testified, and let it go at that. But the content of the testimony needs to be left to the court reporter's transcript.
The meetings have always been quasi-judicial.
These are the same kind of minutes we've always taken and approved.
It seems to me that if there's a question about the accuracy of the minutes and we have the full transcript, that could be corrected if somebody wanted to make an argument based on the transcript. To be honest with you, at some level... Oh, sorry. So my point was that if somebody were to take issue with the contents of the minutes, we have a comprehensive transcript of the proceedings that could be referred to for clarification.
One question. Would the court reporter's recording be part of the thing that would go to a hearing examiner if it did?
Is that a question for me? Well, and forgive me to ask for this clarification. The court reporter has been at the request of applicant, is that correct? Or is this the city's? I've not been made aware of that.
We have engaged the court reporter, but the city has been getting copies of the transcripts.
Okay. So it's currently something that applicant has requested. It could become a part of the record if the parties were to submit it. It's not been submitted. Well, there's been one excerpt that's been submitted as a copy of the record until such time. It's not been submitted as a copy of your record that you're using to base your decision on, but it certainly could be entered into the record for such purposes and entered by the parties upon appeal. Okay. I'll speak louder.
So just add another question on how we deal with the minutes and the record. Do we, could we wait until we have reached a conclusion of testimony of this proceedings and then decide what goes into the record with respect to minutes versus the recording? Or is that up to our applicant and the city?
The minutes that you choose to adopt are the development commission's minutes. You can choose to adopt those tonight as written or with amendments or corrections. You can also decide to delay the adoption of those minutes unless there's some rule for the development commission that I'm missing, but I don't see any reason why you cannot delay or if that's something that you would like to do.
I think that since we have a word-for-word record that can correct anything that may be amiss, that's pointed out in the minutes, that we should go ahead and approve our minutes. I agree with you that our minutes, we've done quasi-judicial meetings before and the minutes have not changed, so I think we ought to make a decision on the minutes as submitted.
So the other question, too, I guess, we're going to be back here tomorrow night, so we've got the ability to... Since this just came up and we weren't aware of this, is it something that would be worthwhile looking into further on your part for us to see if there's something where we would approve these, but also say we would also incorporate, reference the other things as well? Maybe try to figure that out by tomorrow?
Yeah, no, I would be happy to look into that to see, like I said, if I've missed something that I think that would be advisable, to see if there'd be something... You're welcome to speak up. I can't actually hear you if I'm not speaking loud enough. If you'd like, yeah, we can resume with this conversation tomorrow. We do have executive session on the agenda, so we can, if you have any questions about that, but I can also probably just come back into open session and let you know if there's any reason advisable with respect to your internal rules or the city code with respect to adoption or delay of adoption of the minutes in addition to the concern, the question about the transcript and what role that plays.
Okay. So I think that makes sense that we defer consideration of the meeting minutes until our meeting tomorrow evening and then give counsel an opportunity to look at our rules and anything that might be relevant to our decision on adoption or not.
Let's do that.
And the ability to reference to transcripts as well.
Right. Let's do that. We'll postpone the decision on the minutes until tomorrow, tomorrow's meeting. Thank you. With that, Mr. Law, I think it's turning it over to you.
I have one more preliminary matter, I'm afraid. It's how the record is being kept. My understanding from emails since the last meeting is that Ms. Sloman is the official custodian of the record, and Ms. Sloman is a witness for one party in this matter, and I think the record needs to be kept by someone who has a neutral position in this. And it's nothing against Ms. Sloman personally, but her position in this case as a witness, I think, precludes her from being the official keeper of the record, and so I would ask that some other arrangement be made for that.
So it would seem like a fairly simple process to designate somebody else within the city that could be the repository for that information? Can we, I don't know who to talk to to do that.
I think if you would agree that it needs to be someone who's not an active witness in the meeting, then I think we can leave it up to the city to find an appropriate person.
I understand. We'll do that. Thank you. We'll do that. Thank you. Anything else?
Not by way of preliminary issues.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Law.
I have two preliminary points. First, I believe as the city indicated at the commencement of the second-to-last proceeding that the hearing examiner had recently at that point denied and dismissed the appeal that had been filed by IHIFC of the September 2018 staff reports underlying this proceeding. Since the last time we met, IHIFC filed a motion for reconsideration of the hearing examiner's order, and as of yesterday, the hearing examiner has denied that motion. That's just again for purposes of the record. The second preliminary point concerns some evidence that had been referred to by Ms. Sloman in her redirect testimony. She had referred to some, I believe, some processing charts that had never been formally adopted by the city, and at the request of Mr. Schneider, had agreed, or Ms. Sloman had agreed to provide those documents to me and to then provide them to Mr. Schneider in advance of tonight's proceeding. We have done that, but for purposes of making them an exhibit, I would respectfully ask for the opportunity to briefly bring Ms. Sloman back to the stand in order to introduce these materials and have them made an exhibit.
And I would just note that they were provided to me about three minutes before the hearing began, so I haven't had time to review them, but they were technically before the hearing.
That's a good thing. So, yes.
Thank you. I'd like to recall Ms. Sloman. And I apologize to the commission. I only have one copy that I'll be submitting to Ms. La... Lial. And I would like to designate this as City Exhibit C42, please.
So I have them electronically, but they're in separate documents, so you have to tell me which one you want me to pull up.
Very briefly, Ms. Sloman, could you please reaffirm that you continue to be under oath from your previous testimony?
I do.
Thank you. Could you briefly describe the materials that are up on the screen?
The processing chart from Appendix L, everyone tended to find very confusing because it laid out, it laid out quite a bit of information in a single chart. And so as a result, the city and Port Blakely developed these. They were never formally adopted, as Mr. Law mentioned, but these were the charts that we used to try and help applicants understand. I apologize, I didn't silence my phone. These are the charts that we use to try and help applicants understand the timeframes, and they were the basis for the, I think it was Exhibit 37 or something like that, that the city showed where the timelines for processing different permits.
Thank you. And just to clarify, these materials were never formally adopted and therefore, in your view, don't have binding regulatory effect?
Right. They were just our understanding and used by the master developer and city to explain it, but were not formally adopted.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay.
I have a couple. Ms. Sloman, there are charts in here that appear to be addressing the same timeframe. For example, I'm looking at one right now that talks about commission and council preliminary plat, but there are multiple versions of it with different time periods. Here's one that says 101 days, here's one that says 117 days. So how did those time periods change?
So I'm just, I'm going to blow this up on screen. I understand this is some... So if you look at the bottom of the page, there are different dates. This one's from, one page is from '97, and a different page was, the previous page was from 2008. So in the process of using these, we rechecked our math, added them up in a different way, and adjusted the dates based on that, and I have notes on those different ways that we looked at it when we were working with applicants and the master developer.
So did you, we have days in Appendix L. These are obviously different days to some extent that were never adopted by the council, so did you treat these as superseding what was in Exhibit L?
No, we treated these as a way of unpacking the unwieldy chart that was in Appendix L.
And the one we've been talking about, even if you take the longer one, the 117 days for a preliminary plat, we're well over a year now on shelters preliminary plat, aren't we?
Well, it's been out for corrections for almost a year.
Oh, really? It was out for corrections for almost a year. When did you send the first correction notice, Ms. Sloman?
In March.
And when did you get the plat application, the prior August, correct?
In August, yes.
And you gave public notice in December?
Yes.
Ms. Sloman, has there been any staffing shortage in 2018 that would have affected the processing of shelters applications?
Not shortages, no.
So when Mr. Niven testified to the contrary, he was incorrect?
There is still a lot of training going on because we had all new staff in 2017, none of whom had either the institutional memory or knowledge of code that was necessary.
Shelter's applications have all been assigned to the same staffer throughout, correct?
They were assigned to the one senior planner, yes.
That's Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all. Well, we have one other matter. At the conclusion of Mr. Niven's testimony, he was the last witness last time after Ms. Sloman introduced a number of documents, and I asked him questions about the exhibit that's in the record as, I think it's in the record twice, both as Exhibit 40, no, it's in the record as Exhibit C41, the city's 41 exhibit. It's the November 22, 2017, letter from Mr. Niven to Mr. Abdelnour. And I asked Mr. Niven whether, and I can read the transcript if there's any need to do so. I asked Mr. Niven whether, or hadn't Mr. Abdelnour written that letter and asked him to sign it and send it back to Mr. Abdelnour? And Mr. Niven testified he couldn't remember. So I now have an exhibit, which is the email to Mr. Niven from Mr. Abdelnour with a draft of the letter asking him to prepare it and sign it, and I would offer that as Shelter's Exhibit 18. If Mr. Niven wants to testify, that's fine as well.
Mr. Chairman, we have not had an opportunity to discuss this with Mr. Niven. We'd be happy to do that if you would give us a few-minute break, or we can proceed with the understanding that we would do that on rebuttal.
Let's take a break.
Thank you.
Let's take, what do you need? Five minutes?
Thank you.
Let's take a five-minute break. We're back in session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to briefly call Mr. Niven to clarify and contextualize the document that was just introduced by the applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Niven, could you please reaffirm from your prior testimony that you continue to be under oath?
I'm still under oath.
Thank you. I'd like to hand you a copy of the document just handed out by Mr. Schneider. I believe this was introduced as applicant's Exhibit 18.
Thank you.
And to refresh your recollection, as Mr. Schneider indicated, I believe in your prior testimony, under questioning, you could not recall whether or not Mr., and I'm going to have difficulty with his name.
Abdellnour.
Abdellnour sent you a copy of the letter in question as a draft with a request for you to sign it, or whether you had individually authored that document on your own. Do you recall that line of questioning?
I do.
Okay. Well, now you've had an opportunity to review the document. Could you please expand upon your previous answer?
Sure. So this is a letter that came via email to me. It was drafted by Mr. Abdellnour, and it was, the purpose of it was to facilitate a request that Polygon Northwest had made of the city, which was to issue the status update on vesting.
Thank you. Mr. Niven, is it uncommon in your experience as the director to have applicants or land use proponents send documents to you that have been pre-authored and ask for you to sign them?
On the contrary, actually, if someone wants something from the city and they know what they want, the easiest way to get to an outcome is to ask them to draft it initially. So that moves the process along a lot quicker, and it's more efficient for us to have a document to start with. Now, we review it and make sure it contains accurate information and represents the city's position, so just because it was authored by an applicant doesn't mean we just turn around and sign it. It's reviewed for its purpose and accuracy.
So you do independently review documents that are ghost-drafted for you by third parties?
Absolutely. If my signature's going on it, I make sure I'm comfortable with its contents.
Thank you. And I believe the date of the email of Mr. Abdellnour's message to you was November 2017?
It says November 14, 2017.
Thank you. Approximately how many emails do you get on a daily basis?
It varies. Anywhere between 100 and 200 emails a day.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
I should have pointed out that the attachment has, the draft letter has today's date on it. That's because in the attachment to the email, it has a field that prints out whatever date it's printed on, but it is the attachment that accompanied the November 2017 email. So, Mr. Niven, so this letter that you reviewed and signed bases Polygon's vesting on the Affordable Housing Development Agreement, correct?
So that letter, if that's the attachment to the email, then that would be the letter that Mr. Abdellnour sent me. I don't know if this is the letter I signed. Maybe it is, maybe there's a different version that I signed.
Yeah, you did tweak some of the, in particular, the introduction, but the substance of talking about vesting is the same. I'm happy to show you a copy of the letter you signed. It is Exhibit C41.
I've handed him a copy of C41.
So why don't we look at Exhibit C41, the letter you actually signed, and it, I submit, and you correct me if I'm wrong, it tracks the language in Mr. Abdellnour's draft and refers to the New Development Agreement to provide affordable housing units on Polygon-controlled property known as West Ridge North. It goes on to say, based on the terms of the agreement, Polygon is vested, correct? That's an inaccurate paraphrase. You correct me.
That's correct.
Okay. And the Affordable Housing Agreement that we're talking about here is the one that was entered into in September of 2017, correct? It predated this letter?
I don't have, it was the document we were discussing at the end of the last Development Commission meeting.
We were discussing two documents. There's C34, and maybe your council can help you again. There's C34, which is the Affordable Housing Development Agreement, and then there's C33, which is the Developer Sales Agreement that you and Ms. Sloman have sometimes referred to as a development agreement. So why don't we, I want to call your attention to the dates of those documents. So again, correct me if I'm wrong, Exhibit C34, the Affordable Housing Development Agreement referred to in your letter to Mr. Abdellnour, is dated, the second signature is dated September 18, 2017, correct?
So the document was signed by the mayor on September 18, 2017?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And the other document, the Developer Sales Agreement, what is the date that it was signed? If you look at the third page of the exhibit, the first page of the Developer Sales Agreement... It's called Page Two. It's actually the third page of the printout.
So Page Two is dated the 27th day of December, 2017?
So that was a month after your letter to Mr. Abdellnour saying that Polygon was vested, correct?
Yes.
And you testified last time that the Development Agreement, C34, doesn't address vested rights, correct?
So I believe I connected those two exhibits together by reference.
Well, I'm getting to that, but right now I'm just asking, you agree, you have testified that the Development Agreement from September does not address vested rights, correct?
Yes.
And what you testified to last time is that two sections of the December document, the one dealing with it being a covenant running with the land, Section Four, and then Section Five termination, that those two sections together created a construct, and I think that was your word, for vesting of Polygon, correct?
Yes.
But this document that you're saying created the vesting was a month after your letter to Mr. Abdellnour, correct?
The signing of it, so, so, so the council approved, so if you look at the recitals under, on Exhibit 34, Recital G, so the council had the hearings on these agreements... Recital G, so, the council had the hearings on these agreements in May and June of 17, well in advance of this letter that was issued to Mr. Abdalnor.
Well, you're referring to finding G in Exhibit C-34, the one that was signed in September and is the development agreement, correct?
Right. Yes.
Okay. And it doesn't make any mention of the Developer Sales Agreement, does it?
It does. It actually refers to the requirement for 33 to happen.
Okay. Where's that?
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Niven, I --
Please, would expedite this, I think, so.
I was about to tell, Mr. Niven, I think what he's looking for is at the top of Page Three.
Yes, it's subsection E. I was almost there. Sorry, I'm a slow reader. Subsection E on Page Three.
Okay. And it -- why don't you read the first sentence of that to us?
The owners in Prend's, Polygon Northwest, and the city will execute and record an affordable housing agreement pursuant to IMC 1821050 prior to September 30, 2017, or as otherwise approved by the director, but prior to issuing any building permits for any market townhouses in West Ridge multifamily north, Prend's C Attachment Two, or parcel D period.
Okay. So, in September, the city -- actually, about two weeks before the date in that subsection C, the city said -- or the development agreement said the city would execute and record an affordable housing agreement, correct?
So, that's section -- subsection E. You said C. I'm not sure if you meant C or E.
I meant E. I apologize.
Okay, that's okay. I was trying to make sure I don't get confused. Says September 30th, or as otherwise approved by the director. That would be me. So, what that told me was, we expected it to be able to be executed by the end of September, but there was the ability for it to be potentially later if reasons called for it to be later.
And so, the letter that Mr. Abdalnor wrote and that you signed doesn't refer to the subsequent agreement referred to in that paragraph, correct?
It doesn't specifically identify Paragraph E. It references an agreement to provide affordable housing units on the property, which is what this document does.
It says entered into past -- again, I'm back to C-41. It refers to past tense, entered into a development agreement to provide affordable housing, and that is the September agreement, obviously not the December one, since December hadn't come yet, correct?
So, I'm going to go back to the letter I actually signed, which is C-41. So, what Paragraph Two says is, as referenced above, the city of Isiqua and Polygon WLH, LLC entered into a new development agreement in Prend's agreement to provide affordable housing units on Polygon-controlled property known as West Ridge North. The agreement was an outcome of the Ninth Major Amendment to the Isiqua Highlands Development Agreement and the First Major Amendment of the Wash Dot Park Point TDR Development Agreement. So, those are the references.
Okay. No further questions, Mr. Niven.
So, is there further testimony to be held?
Mr. Chairman, and we would yield to the applicant.
Okay.
Then we're prepared to proceed. I'm going to, as did Mr. Lell, I'm going to give an opening statement that attempts to provide an overview of the evidence and why we're presenting the evidence you're going to receive. Unfortunately, we have a lot of -- oh, yes. And Ms. Correia is going to put up on the screen a PowerPoint that has a few slides that I'm going to use in my opening statement. That's going to take a moment, so I will keep talking while she does that. The evidence that we're presenting so far is in these two boxes here on the table. So, you can see, we have a lot of exhibits. We're going to be required by the circumstances we're in to tell you a detailed story. It's going to be presented primarily initially by Tia Heim, who's been sitting next to us at these hearings and who was the applicant's representative in dealing with the city. You're also going to hear from Patrick Malaney, who is -- was the attorney for Shelter during this process, and you're going to hear from Gary Young, who's been here for most of the hearings and is here tonight and is the principal of Shelter. Ms. Heim took careful notes of her interactions with the city. Every time there was a meeting, she would go back to the office and that same day, or at the latest, the next day, she would make detailed notes. So, the evidence that she's going to be presenting about specific things that were said at specific meetings and in specific places, it's all based on contemporaneous records of what happened. It's not just to be from her memory. And the story that you're going to hear, based on the documents we're presenting and on Ms. Heim's testimony in particular, is a very different story than you've heard so We're supposed to be a nation of laws, and if you all remember what, you know, we were all supposed to learn in junior high or high school, that means the legislative body enacts the laws, the administrative or executive branch of government enforces the laws, and the judicial branch interprets the laws. And what that means in the land use context is that the city council enacts regulations, the mayor and the department heads are supposed to implement those regulations, and then if things go wrong, we end up in a quasi-judicial or a judicial proceeding, as we have now. But the implementation of the laws is supposed to be based on the adopted laws and not on the individual inclinations of the people who happen to have the position of authority at a particular moment in time. And it's not supposed to be based on who, you know, the current elected officials like or dislike. It's supposed to be based on the written regulations lawfully adopted by the city That is not what happened in this case. And we're -- it's unfortunate that we have to tell this story, but we're going to be presenting a very different story than you've heard. We're going to be presenting a story of people who did not follow the regulations, who treated Shelter very differently than it was treating other applicants, Polygon just being a prominent example of that, and city officials who said one thing and did another. And why is that relevant to the vested rights? Well, because the city has made it relevant and because courts give deference to government officials if they're acting in good faith and if they're being consistent and if they're acting as a matter of policy. I want to call your attention to testimony that Mr. Lell got from Ms. Sloman on the very first night of the hearing. And I want -- I'm going to read the question and answer out. It's very short, and I would like you to keep this exchange in mind as you hear the testimony we're going to present, because it'll explain why we are presenting evidence to rebut this testimony. So, this is on Page 96 of the transcript of our first hearing, and it's a question from Mr. Lell to Ms. Sloman. Question, in your dealings with IHIFC, did you act consistently, honestly, and in good faith? Answer, I did. Question, did you ever deliberately discriminate against IHIFC or otherwise deliberately target IHIFC for negative disparate treatment? Answer, absolutely not. Question, did you ever inform IHIFC that its ASD application or SDP applications were permanently vested such that they would not be subject to the replacement regulations? Answer, no. The city has asked you to accept the fact that the city's officials are acting in good faith and is trying to create a record that says a court should defer. Well, the record we're going to create shows that we were being discriminated against, the regulations were not being followed, and that we were told repeatedly that we were vested. Now, this concept of permanent vesting that is in the passage I just quoted from -- is a concept the city invented for the purposes of this hearing. There is no such thing as permanent vesting as opposed to some other kind of vesting. We've had a vested rights doctrine in this state since about 1956. Since the early 1970s, when land use regulation really took off, when our environmental laws were adopted like SEPA and the Shoreline Management Act, there have been lots of vested rights cases. None of those cases has ever used the phrase permanent vesting. The concept is a tautology, and by that I mean, there is no -- vesting is either permanent or it doesn't exist in the first place. And by permanent, we don't mean lasting forever, but we mean vested rights continue after the regulations change. That is the purpose and meaning of vested rights. If they're not permanent in that sense, then they never existed. Rights that go away when the legislation changes are not vested rights. So, I'm going to turn to the PowerPoint now, and this is just a reminder of the property we're talking about up on the Highlands. The 21-plus acres owned by IHFC are a big L along immediately adjacent to the undeveloped brown parcel immediately adjacent to the street, comes on down and makes a turn to the left. It's 21 acres. It's obviously a very, very valuable piece of property. Next slide, please. So, the city has told you, the witnesses have testified, I think Mr. Lell said as much in his opening statement, that the city council could take away the vested rights, even if they existed, even if things were mistakenly said that IHIFC was vested, the city council had the authority to take away those vested rights. This is a quote from a case decided in May of last year in the prison industrial complex versus King County, and what is quoted is what is about as simple and straightforward a principle as you'll ever get in the law. Legislation cannot be applied retroactively where doing so would affect vested rights. And then there's this -- the string cited is all of the cases that the Division One of the Court of Appeals cited in May for that statement, and the statement goes way back in time. You could find a lot older cases that say that. Legislation cannot be applied retroactively where doing so would affect vested rights. The city council had no authority to change and take away vested rights. Invested rights only exist if, in fact, they continue after the legislation changes. Otherwise, they're not vested rights. They're something else. Next slide. So, this is the section in the development agreement that Ms. Sloman told the city council wasn't there. Section 3.2.3 Vesting. After build-out. Build-out is the 20-year period under the development agreement when the regulations could not change. After build-out, then it was up to the city council to enact new regulations. They couldn't do so during the build-out period. Afterwards, they could have done so right away. They could have waited another 20 years. It was entirely up to the city council's discretion. So, the people who entered into the vested rights agreement in 1996 made it very clear, the development standards shall continue to apply to all applications for implementing approval submitted after expiration of the build-out period, except either party may terminate this agreement and the zoning and development regulations may be modified as provided in Section 5.1.3. Well, the city will say that Section 5.1.3 completely eviscerates what is in here. Well, that's simply not the case. It couldn't do that, even if -- even if that's what it said, but that's not what it says. When you're reading legislation, you have to, whenever possible, you have to read the different parts so they fit together, and so you give effect to all the parts. One part doesn't undermine or eviscerate another part. And Section 5.1.3 simply says that, you know, the -- it's called -- it's referred to as the termination of the end of the development agreement, and it's entirely consistent with this. The city is basically saying the last sentence of 5.1.3 makes meaningless what's in 3.2 -- 3.2.3.2, and that's not the way statutes are interpreted. So, the city's position to basically say that this doesn't mean what it says is not going to withstand scrutiny either. And this whole concept that the city council could take away the vested rights is so contrary to law that it's even hard to express frustration in talking about it. So, next exhibit, please. So, this is, again, Ms. Sloman's slide that she presented to the city council on multiple occasions. We've highlighted the bullet or the diamond that says the development agreement does not provide regulations or guidance on vesting of projects. Well, it does, and as we just showed you. Next slide. Now, this gets us to the West Main issue that you've heard about. West Main is a case that came out of the city of Bellevue back in the mid-1980s, and the city of Bellevue basically imposed a lot of land use approval process on an applicant before they could apply for a building permit and vest. And so, they -- the city very clearly intended to, you know, do exactly what Isiqua is doing here, is give itself the authority to change the regulations after someone is vested, or in West Main's case, to actually prevent the vesting in the first place by submitting the building permit. It went all the way to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court said no, because vested rights are constitutionally based. They're based on property rights, and the city council cannot simply prevent someone from fixing the regulations that apply to their property. It's a fundamental attribute of property in the state of Washington. Now, the city regularly acknowledged, not only privately but publicly, that it was required by the West Main case to allow applicants to vest when they commenced the land use process. That is on the material that is given to applicants that we've entered into evidence. That is on the, the material that is given to applicants that we've entered into evidence where it clearly says you need your land use approval before you can even apply for a building permit. So the city understood that's perfectly lawful for the city to do, but you can't, but the city then had the West Main problem, so it agreed that people vested when they applied for the land use approval. And that was the city's practice. The development agreement is entirely consistent with that practice. It says you vest when you apply for the implementing approvals. We vested pursuant to the language in the development agreement because we applied for implementing approvals. The site development permit, the administrative site development permit, and the subdivision. We vested pursuant to the terms of the development agreement. The, the Washington courts have said clearly for decades, the legislative body cannot take away those rights. So you, we've also heard from the city that the development agreement was just a contract. And when the contract expires, then the rights that were created by that contract go away. Well, that may or may not be true. Lots of rights created in a contract are expressly made to continue after the contract ends. But that is certainly not the case here because this is not just your ordinary development agreement. This is not the affordable housing development agreement that we've been talking about with Mr. Niven. This development agreement actually created the land use regulations that applied in the Isaguas Highlands for 20-plus years. Without that development agreement, there would have been no land use regulations in the Isaguas Highlands. If you looked at the city code, the city code said for development regulations, look at the development agreement. So to say that those, this development agreement was just a contract is not the case. State law says that a development agreement is both a contract and an exercise of the police power. As an exercise of the police power, it was the development regulations that were in place that we, our client IHIFC knew were going to expire and they made a, so they were, you know, they, they vested. And vested to this development agreement is not only vesting to the regulations because they were the only regulations that were in place, it's also vesting to the mitigation. The development agreement is very clear that one of the things you vest to is mitigation. We're talking tens of millions of dollars of mitigation that go with these vested rights and that according to the city have evaporated. Now, Mr. Niven, you know, testified, "Well, we wanted to talk about mitigation and the applicant didn't want to talk about it." Well, you're going to hear very different testimony from the applicant on that issue. There are tens of millions of dollars at stake here because the mitigation was paid upfront, the infrastructure was created upfront, the studies, the environmental review was done upfront, and it was all done by agreement between the city and the applicant. The 1996 development agreement for the Isaguas Highlands is the poster child for how the Growth Management Act is supposed to work. And it did work. But it's not working now because there's been a change in policy within the city. The current elected officials, or some of them at least, don't like what was in the development agreement, what their predecessors agreed to. And so they have treated IHIFC in the way that you're going to hear about in this testimony. It's a very detailed story, and it's a story of the city not acting in accordance with the law, not acting in accordance with the regulations in the development agreement, saying one thing and doing another, and treating similarly situated people differently. So we are vested, we're vested as a matter of law. The facts will show that, and the facts will also show that the city's actions here take away any right to have its position on any of this given, any deference by any reviewing body. And that's the conclusion to my opening statement, and Ms. Carey is going to proceed with the
Mr. Chair, since we're an hour in maybe, and we're going to start with testimony, maybe it would be a good point to take a break, just give everybody a few minutes, and then back to it. Suggestion?
Do we want to take a, talk about the notes as well? If people are waiting, let's take a 10-minute break. You're ready to go.
We have a bridge, a bog.
All right, we're back on there, so let's proceed.
I need to correct one misstatement in my opening statement. The quote I read from the question and answer with Ms. Sloman, I said it was from the September hearing. It was actually from the November 29 hearing. The quote was accurate, but it was from the November 29 hearing, so I wanted to correct the record on that.
Good evening, my name is Jaclyn Carey, I can go by Jackie. I'm co-counsel with Pat Schneider, and we'll be taking the direct testimony of Tia Heim, who's our first witness. So Tia, if you could up here, please. And our court reporter, will you please swear her in?
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this cause will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Good evening, Ms. Heim, can I call you Tia in our s-? Excellent. So, Tia, can you please introduce yourself for the record? Where's your current employer?
My name's Tia Heim, and I work for Shelter Holdings.
And how long have you been working for Shelter?
I started working for Shelter in April of 2015.
Will you describe your professional experience before coming to Shelter?
Sure. I am a real estate and land use lawyer by training, went to UC Berkeley for law school, spent about six years at Perkins Coie in their real estate and land use department, then went in-house with D.R. Horton, a national home builder, as their in-house counsel and ran their land development and entitlement department for about eight, eight and a half years.
And since you came to Shelter in April of 2015, what have been your roles there?
I am part of the development team there, so I primarily focus on land use and entitlement and permitting issues on various projects around the Pacific Northwest, in addition to dealing with various legal issues.
And have you been fairly involved in the projects that we're talking about this evening?
Yes, I would say that I'm the primary contact on all of the applications that we've talked about.
And does that also include the plat application that's not before us today, but is also pending?
It does.
And I guess the same question for there's an office application out there, too?
Yes.
Okay. Just as a preliminary matter, you have a binder in front of you of some documents. Can you describe for me what that is, please?
This binder has my notes that I took at various meetings over the course of working in Isaguac. So as a typical practice, after each meeting, or during each meeting, I would take handwritten notes, and after each meeting, I would follow up by typing them up.
And so was it fair to say that it's your regular practice to take these notes at all the meetings that you go to?
Yes.
And you maintain them in the regular course of business?
Yes.
And the copies in front of you, those are copies, exact copies of the notes that you've been taking, whether handwritten or typed up afterwards?
Yes.
So we're going to be using Ms. Heim's notes throughout the course of this to refresh her recollection. We're not offering them into the record, they're just here as a guide as she's testifying, because we'll be talking about a lot of these meetings. So I'd like to start first by just describing the property. We've heard a little bit about it from the city's testimony, but I'd like to start from the beginning. So I've put a figure up here on the screen. This would be, I believe, Exhibit S-19, for the record. And we have copies of that to distribute as well. So Tia, can you just describe in general, what is IHIFCs or shelters? I'm going to refer to them interchangeably. What does the property look like? Can you just describe its size?
Yes. So it is about 21 and a half acres, and it runs along Ninth Avenue Northeast and Northeast Discovery Drive. It's sometimes referred to as a backwards L-shaped property. And then the property sort of inside the L shape is all owned by Polygon, which is a separate entity.
And that's where it's referring to the future West Ridge development site on the figure?
Yes.
And turning to this figure, which would be S-20 for the record. And again, we've got copies of that one. And I have another one coming up as well, that I'm just, if Pat's passing them out at this time, it'll be S-21. It's another figure similar to this. But Tia, can you describe what this is up on the screen right now?
Yes, so this map shows our property, and it labels each of the blocks of our property. So if you start at the north, at the top, the first label says High Street Collection Blocks A and B. And that would be, those blocks were, are covered by our retail SDP. Moving down, then you see High Street Collection Block C. And actually, the north portion of Block C is also part of the retail SDP application. And then we have a preliminary land use application for an office building on the remaining portion of Block C. Then the next label that you see is High Street Collection Block D. And Block D is the site of the medical office building, ASDP. And then the last label there is the High Street Collection Block E. And a portion of Block E is the location of the storage ASDP.
Thank you. All right, so I've put another figure up on the screen, which we'll be referring to as S-21. Tia, what does this figure show?
Wait a minute, we had a breakdown. This is S-21?
Yes, so...
This is hopefully going to be S-20.
Yes, that's S-20. Well, for the time being, we will... Do you mind if I provide you a copy if we look for it in a moment? It's just a demonstrative figure. So again, this is S-21. And we'll locate a copy of that in a minute here, but to continue on with Tia's testimony. Tia, can you describe what this is showing?
Yeah, this map shows both our projects, and it also labels the other relevant projects that you may have heard or will hear testimony on. So they are other active projects or recent projects in Isaguac Highlands.
So, starting up at the northern part there with Block 19, can you give me just a broad overview of what that project is?
Block 19 is a multifamily apartment project.
And how about City Surf just south of that?
City Surf is an indoor wave park.
And then moving over to the West Ridge projects, there's a handful of them, but maybe starting with West Ridge, West Ridge North Single Family is the very top one.
Okay, so West Ridge North Single Family is a single-family plat that is owned by Polygon. I think it's somewhere around 72 single-family lots, and it's adjacent to a portion of our property. Then moving down, you've got West Ridge Town Homes North. That is a site development permit that was approved for another Polygon project that's adjacent to a portion of our project. Moving further down, you have West Ridge Town Home South, another SDP townhome project adjacent to our property. Then you've also got West Ridge Affordable Housing, which is another Polygon project. I believe that one is an ASDP because of the size and the fact that it is vested to the development agreement. Then you've got the City Short Plat, which is a piece that's owned by the city of Isaguac that they were processing a short plat on. And you have the West Ridge Single Family South, which is another single-family plat, which I believe at this point is all built out and probably mostly sold.
And then if I recall right, Track D up in the corner there, how was that tied to the Highlands?
So Track D was part of the Polygon TDR deal. So they, I think, have the right to purchase that tract for a dollar in exchange for building additional affordable housing in some of their townhomes and as the West Ridge Affordable Housing project.
So the collection of all these properties and projects, is this a fair summary of the remaining development in the Isaguac Highlands?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to move on now to the staff reports that are the subject of this hearing. I believe that there's copies of the staff reports in the record already, but not the attachments that go with them, so we were going to offer in the full copies. So we have those at what would be Exhibits S-22, 23, and 24.
Do I need a copy of it?
Okay, and then just as a preliminary matter, as we're going through, we have some exhibits that have already been put into the record. So the S exhibits for Shelter, the C exhibits for the city. We've brought additional copies of those this evening, in case you don't have a copy counsel for the city or the Development Commission. But I can pass those out as we go, or if you already have a copy, I'll refrain from doing that.
The city has copies of all the exhibits that the city previously submitted, thank you for asking.
Okay, thank you. And for the Development Commission, we don't have copies for every single member, but I can provide another courtesy copy if that would be helpful.
That would be, thank you.
I'm going to turn now to what was previously marked as Exhibit A-6, which I believe is going to be now referred to as S-6, because we changed the naming conventions for shelters exhibits. Handing a copy to Tia of that, and another copy for the Development Commission. Tia, can you explain what this document is, please?
I believe that this is a document that was prepared by the city that summarized some of the relevant dates with respect to our applications.
And we heard Ms. Sloman, well, and Director Niven testify to this. Is it your understanding that this was prepared by Ms. Sloman?
Yes.
And in general, are the application dates that are listed in here, so we have the preliminary plat, retail, office, medical office, storage, are those dates consistent with the dates that you're aware of for our applications?
Yes, the submittal dates look right. The one thing that jumps out just looking at this now is I don't believe that we received preliminary plat comments on January 16th of 2018. I don't think we received any comments on our plat until March of 2018.
Okay. And we'll be going through each of the applications in a little bit more detail, so we can correct any differences along the way. But on this timeline, it has a variety of timeframes and dates that Ms. Sloman represents in here would be the date that you would have gotten approval of various applications. So, starting with the plat application, it says approval of 11, approval would be on 11/26 of 2017. Where is the plat application at right now in the process?
We are working on a revision. We just received comments in the couple days before Christmas, and so we are working on getting that revised and resubmitted. But we had been going back and forth with the city to try to get clarity as to what regulations actually applied, and spent many, many months waiting for responses from the city on things like what are the road standards that apply to the plat, which is a pretty important piece of how a plat lays out.
And we'll come back to the various steps along the way with the plat so far, but needless to say, that 11/26 date has not been met, is that right?
Right.
And then with the site development permit submitted for retail, it shows an approval date of March 14th, 2017. We're here today, so I'm going to assume that we haven't gotten any sort of approval or disapproval on our application. How has the SDP permit for retail, and for that matter, for the others that are listed below, how has the timing for processing those differed from what your expectations were under the development agreement? Just in general?
It's been much, much longer than was anticipated by us based on the development agreement.
All right. Switching gears from this exhibit, I'd like to talk generally about the issue that is central to this hearing, which is vesting. Tia, what's your understanding of the vesting doctrine?
Vesting basically means that the, an application is evaluated under the regulations that are in place at the time of complete application.
And so what does it, what does it mean to vest?
It means that you lock into the regulations that are in place at the time you prepare your application. So from just a very practical standpoint, that makes sense, because, you know, applications are a combination of lots of different consultants working to provide information that then gets assembled together into an application. And if the regulations could change in the timeframe, then a developer wouldn't have any ability to plan for their property. So it gives an element of predictability to permitting.
Have you ever heard of the concept of permanent vesting?
No, the first time that I heard that term was from Mr. Lell in the context of this hearing.
How about the concept of being divested?
No. The only way that I am aware of that vesting terminates would be if the permit or the permit application expired by its own terms.
So next I'd like to introduce a new exhibit, which will be Exhibit S-25. So Tia, can you please describe what I've just placed in front of you as S-25?
It's the Grand Ridge Annexation and Development Agreement, so it's what we've been referring to in this hearing as the Isaguac Highlands Development Agreement.
And if you could just flip through there and double-check, this shouldn't be a complete copy of the development agreement, but just excerpts of the relevant portions that we're dealing with in this hearing, is that fair?
Yes.
So if you could turn in that exhibit to Section 3.2.3.
Okay.
And what's the title of that section?
Vesting of Development Standards and Mitigation.
Give me just a second here to pull this up on the screen, so folks can follow along. Okay. So you explained a minute ago your understanding of vesting under Washington law. How does this Section 3.2.3 fit into your understanding of what vesting means generally under Washington law? What does, what does this section mean to you?
This section defines what implementing approvals are, and says that they vest to the development standards, which is a defined term in the development agreement.
Does it matter, under this provision, whether some, an application is submitted before or after the build-out period? As to whether it vests?
No.
And if you look at Section 3.2.3.2, after build-out? You have that in front of you?
Yes.
What does that section say?
It says, "The development standards shall continue to apply to all applications for implementing approval submitted after expiration of the build-out period, except either party may terminate this agreement, and the zoning and development regulations may be modified as provided in Section 5.1.3."
So have you ever understood this section to be in any way temporary or allow for divesting of rights that have vested under this?
No, it wouldn't make any sense if that were what this was interpreted to mean.
And why wouldn't it make any sense?
Because it's in a section that's titled Vesting of Development Standards and Mitigation, and it's talking about how to process permits that come in after the end of the build-out period, but prior to the termination of the agreement. And it would make no sense to say that they would be, that the development standards would continue to apply if then the end of it meant that they don't continue to apply, if the end of that sentence meant that.
And it makes a reference here to Section 5.1.3. Let's turn to that section, please. What is 5.1.3, well, what's it titled, for starters?
It's titled Term.
And what does this section talk about?
It talks about how the development- It talks about how the development agreement terminates.
Does this section have any bearing whatsoever on vested rights?
No.
So, the sections that I just went through, I'll represent are referred to as development standards under the development agreement. Would you agree with that characterization?
Yes.
Were the development -- is it your understanding that the development standards were the development regulations, the GMA Development Regulations, Growth Management Act, that were in place for the term of this development agreement?
Yes, because the code that applied otherwise basically just referenced the fact that development agreement was required and that that's where you would look for development regulations.
Let's keep turning through this document, please, to Appendix L.
Can I make one other comment on the --
Sure.
-- on 5.1.3? There's been some discussion about the last sentence where it says, "Upon such adoption," referring to replacement regulations, "this agreement shall terminate, and thereafter the UGA portion of the property shall be governed by the adopted city zoning and related development regulations." I've heard the city say that that sentence means that you toss out any vested applications and even permits was their original position. And I think that that's a really strange position for the city to take, particularly because any time you adopt new regulations, there's usually a statement at the end that says something like, you know, "After they're adopted, they'll apply." Never would you then infer that that meant all vested applications are terminated. So, it just seems out of context and without any precedence.
Thank you. And so, moving forward to Appendix L, can you describe what the purpose of Appendix L is? What does it provide for?
It's titled City Processing of Land Use Permits. So, it shows the -- both the process and the timeframes that apply to various permits under the development agreement.
And it looks like you're looking at the figure in Appendix L. It's Appendix L, Part 1.
Yes.
And so, under this -- under this Appendix L, this flowchart, can you walk me through what the process would be for? Let's start with our plat application. We talked a minute ago about the fact that Shelter has a plat application as well. If it were processed under the timelines and requirements of Appendix L, what would that look like?
So, for a preliminary plat, you follow the center column, I guess is how I'd refer to it. So, because the Grand Ridge Commission, or what's now the UVDC, makes a recommendation on a preliminary plat. So, if you follow that chart down, it notes that a preliminary application is optional and -- but that if you do submit one, then you should have your project feasibility meeting within 10 days, which is also optional. The next box down is Submit Application or Request, including SEPA documentation, if any. Then 10 days later, you're supposed to have a complete application decision, and the city should place the item on the Grand Ridge Commission meeting agenda for 60 days later. Then, within 30 days of that complete application decision, you're supposed to have an application conference. Within 14 days of that, you're supposed to have an administrative recommendation, the caveat to that being if additional information was requested or provided, that timeframe could shift slightly. After the administrative recommendation, you're supposed to go to Grand Ridge Commission, or now UVDC, within 30 days. And then you get your recommendation written within seven days of that meeting or hearing. And from there, it would go to City Council for approval.
Okay. And going back up the timeline chain just a little bit, you mentioned that one of the first steps in here is Submit Preliminary Application, and it has in parentheses "optional." Did you submit a preliminary application for Shelter's plat?
We did, but we were told that it was not optional.
So, you were told that it was required for your application?
Yes.
Is it your understanding that it's required under Appendix L?
No, it's not required by Appendix L, but staff told us that it was required by them, and also that a collaboration meeting was required before you could even have your preliminary application meeting.
So, just to clarify, you had to go through a collaboration meeting before you could have a preliminary application submitted?
Yes. You had to have the collaboration meeting first, and then initially, we were told then we could request our preliminary application meeting. After the collaboration meeting, we started to request that preliminary application meeting, and then we're told, "Well, no, you can't request that until you submit a complete preliminary land use application package to the city." So, we did that, and then only after we had submitted that application, which was quite substantial and costly, then we could request the preliminary application meeting, which was scheduled, I think it was six weeks out at that point.
And we'll walk through the specific dates of that in more detail later, but was -- were any of those steps -- is it your understanding that any of those steps are required by Appendix L?
No, none of those steps are required by Appendix L.
So, then let's talk about the site development permits that -- and SDPs and SDP that you have in process. Can you do the same thing, please, and walk me through the process that those should be processed under Appendix L?
Sure. So, the site development permit follows the same timing and chain on this chart as the preliminary plat. So, it has the optional pre-app and feasibility meeting, and then -- do you want me to walk through the timeframes, or is that enough to say it follows that same process?
And is that just because it's for a site three acres or greater?
It is. The one difference that I would call out is that I believe the commission actually makes the decision on the site development permit, whereas the plat would go to council for decision. Then the administrative site development permits, which both the medical office and the storage applications are administrative site development permits because they are less than three acres in size. So, that follows the first column on the chart. So, you can see that the -- on that one, the first step is Submit Application, and it does not even note a pre-app or project feasibility meeting as optional. Then, within 10 days of submitting your application, you need a complete application decision from the city. And 21 -- within 21 days of that decision, you should have an application conference with the city. Within seven days, there should be administrative action from the city. And again, the one caveat to that would be a little bit of additional time could be added if additional information was provided by the applicant. So, on our administrative site development permits, we were required to have, again, a collaborative meeting and a preliminary land use application meeting, despite the fact that the Appendix L doesn't -- not only does it not require it, it doesn't even provide for it. And we pointed that out to the city, but they still insisted that that was the process that they wanted to follow.
So, I'd like to switch gears a little bit here, and actually, before we dive into that, we have a couple more figures to put up, just to give an overview of what we're talking about this evening. These are -- they're demonstrative figures. They're timelines that we've put together that I have copies of them here, but in the interest of time, if we can find them maybe during a break and provide them, if there's no objection to that.
No objection, Congress.
Thank you. So, starting with this, and this will be marked as Exhibit 26, S-26. Tia, can you describe this first slide? It says plat application.
Yes. Can you hear me? Sorry, it's kind of hard to see the screen from here. This is a timeline that summarizes some relevant dates with respect to our plat application and its processing.
Will you please walk us through the different timeframes here? So, we start with a binding site plan request, and we can talk about each of these in more detail later. But what, in general, is a binding site plan? What was that request for?
So, initially, in January of 2017, we had wanted to do a binding site plan for our property. And so, in a meeting with Director Niven, we told him that that was what our plan was. His initial response was that we were not allowed to do a binding site plan under the development agreement. We pointed out that it actually was provided for in the development agreement, and there was some back and forth on that. But he really pushed us towards wanting to do a plat rather than a binding site plan. At the -- the next step on there was the collaborative meeting, and I can't totally read the date on there. Is that?
From here, it reads 3/21/2017.
Okay. So, in March, we went in for a collaborative meeting on the binding site plan. At that meeting, there was additional discussion about why a plat would be a better mechanism for us under the development agreement. And a big part of that was the direction that we received at that meeting from Director Niven about vesting, and the way that he described the vesting of a plat would be that if we submitted a plat application, we would vest for five years, and then we would vest for another five years from recording of the final plat. And if we submit -- as long as we submitted our SDP applications within that five years after the recording of the final plat, then those SDP applications would also be vested to the development agreement. So, that was the collaborative meeting. So, based on that, we did move forward with the plat that they had suggested. So, as I referenced just a little while ago, we -- after the collaborative meeting, started asking for the pre-app meeting, and after several requests, we're told, "Well, you have to do your preliminary land use application package before you can request a date." So, we started working on that as soon as we got that direction, submitted that on April, is that 13?
April 13, 2017.
And then immediately requested the preliminary application meeting that the city wanted us to have. And so, the soonest we could get that meeting was May 31, 2017. So, we had the pre-app meeting on that date. And then, we had our plat application submitted on August 1, 2017. After that, we kept asking for a complete application determination because a complete application has significance to vesting. And so, we kept asking for that and weren't getting -- didn't get it initially. Finally got it in October of 2017, but they backdated it to reflect what should have been the correct complete application date, which was August 11, 2017, 10 days after the application was submitted.
And so, a minute ago, you said that you were requesting a complete application determination but weren't getting it. Why was that the case?
I'm not entirely sure. We were requesting it from our planner, Jeanne Lynn. She did have -- there was some back and forth between her and our consultant, Dave Caton, and she acknowledged that it was complete, but she just didn't have time to write it up. And so, after being prodded a few more times, we eventually got it.
And so, we'll talk about what's happened since the complete application determination in a little bit here. Why, you know, we're here tonight for staff reports that are for the Medical Office Building, for retail, and for a storage facility. Why is the plat so important to all of this?
Because there is -- there are sort of two ways that our applications are vested, and one is through the applications themselves, and the other is through the plat. So, the plat vests you to the things that are shown on the plat, or the -- so, if there's building footprints, or if there is a development plan that's shown or demonstrated in the plat application materials, then you vest to that. So, that's why the plat is relevant to this conversation.
Has the city told Shelter what it's vested to in its plat application?
Not specifically. I mean, you've heard Director Niven's testimony on that issue, which, quite frankly, sort of confused me as to why we're here at all, given what he said, which was, he read from the April 4 letter that he sent us, which explained what you vest to under a plat. And he -- it specifically said that if building footprints, or I can't remember the exact terminology, but if building footprints or an overall development plan were demonstrated in the plat, then you would vest to those items. Our plat application clearly shows building footprints, parking, and it allocates the allowable development on a block-by-block basis. And given that, I just struggle to see how he then determined that we were not vested and sent us here, rather than acknowledging, continuing to acknowledge that our vesting meant that our SDP applications should be in front of the UVDC, like all of the other applications in Isiqua Highlands.
Let's turn to the next slide in this exhibit, which is for the Medical Office Building SDP application. Similar to what we did with the plat application, will you please walk me through these different timeframes? And if you're having trouble reading any of them, just let me know, and I can read it off.
Sure. Yeah, the dates are a little bit hard to read, but we'll go with 9/26/2017. We had a collaborative meeting. Again, we knew that these were not required by the development agreement, but the city was telling us that we had to have both the collaborative meeting and the pre-app meeting at various stages on each of these applications. We asked to forego those meetings, and were told, "No." And further, we're told that if the -- if we didn't have a pre-app meeting, that the staff would have no ability to ever deem our application complete because it would be like it was in a foreign language, which I found particularly hard to believe. But nonetheless, we really wanted to get our applications processed and -- to get our applications processed, and we proceeded with the process that the city was laying out for us. So, we did the collaborative meeting on 9/26/2017. We had our pre-op meeting on October 23, 2017. And we submitted our application on November 21, 2017. Sorry, I think I misspoke. The October 23, 2017, was when the preliminary application was submitted. The meeting, the soonest date that they would give us for a pre-op meeting was November 28, 2017. So, we went ahead and submitted the full ASDP application prior to the pre-op meeting.
So, going back to the preliminary application, and this is something that applies across the ASDPs and SDPs, what does that application look like? Is that just a preliminary, you know, site plan, or is it something more than that?
The preliminary land use application in Izaqua, I think the name is really misleading, because it's not what a pre-op is in any other jurisdiction in which I've worked, and I've worked in a lot of jurisdictions. In Izaqua, what they call a collaborative meeting is more similar to what a pre-op meeting is in other jurisdictions. So, to give you an example, our preliminary land use application packets for these SDPs, in the range of $30,000 worth of consultant work goes into them. So, this is not a back-of-the-napkin sketch, nobody's invested. This is a lot of work, a lot of time, and a lot of effort goes into those application packets.
So, the outcome of that for the preliminary application, is it fairly similar to what ends up being submitted as the actual application?
Yes.
And then down along the bottom here, there's some additional dates on this timeline. Starting with the one on November 22, 2017, it says, "Director confirmed preliminary application complete and vested." And we'll talk more about each of these mile points along the way, but can you describe what that was?
Yes. So, multiple times in conversation, Director Niven had told us that in Izaqua, as a general rule, the preliminary land use application was deemed to be the vesting event. And at one point, he said, "I just haven't gotten around to writing it up yet," but that that is how the city treats vesting. And so, after having heard that multiple times, we asked him to confirm that now that we had preliminary land use applications, which had been deemed complete, because the 10 days had passed, that those applications were all deemed complete and vested to the development agreement. So, I think you have already seen in one of the exhibits, the email exchange between Director Niven and myself, where he confirms that those applications are vested.
And then, how about this next date on March 15, 2018? It says, "Director's letter, again, confirmed complete application." Again, we'll go into more detail, but in general, what's that referring to?
So, that's referring to a letter agreement between Shelter, IHIFC, and the city, where they recognize that our, all of our SDP, ASDP applications are complete.
And then, the next one on the timeline there is April 4, 2018. It says, "Director's letter, divesting determination." What's that referring to?
So, that was referring to a letter that is, I think, also in the record already, that Director Niven wrote to us on April 4, 2018, informing us that he had now decided that our applications were no longer vested.
And then, moving to September 17, 2018, staff report containing Director's divesting determination. What's that referring to?
That's referring to the staff reports that came to this commission.
So, turning to the next slide is for the storage ASDP application. And looking there at the bottom, there's similar dates as before, so we don't need to go through the bottom part of this timeline. But can you walk us through the top of that timeline for the storage application?
Sure. On this one, we had a collaborative meeting on October 24, 2017. We submitted our preliminary land use application on December 1, 2017. We had our preliminary application meeting on January 17, 2018. And we submitted a full ASDP application on February 14, 2018.
And for this application, is there anything different about it that would change anything about what you said compared to the Medical Office Building application in terms of what's required for collaborative meetings, preliminary application, or do they follow the same process? Should they have followed the same process?
They should have followed the same process.
And so, the collaborative meeting and preliminary application and preliminary application meeting, those things, it's your understanding they wouldn't be required under Appendix L?
Right. They're not required under Appendix L. And we, again, had pointed this out, and were told that we needed to proceed with those if we wanted to submit an application.
And then, the next slide in this exhibit is retail SDP application. And same thing, I'll represent that the bottom of that timeline is similar to what we'd seen in the other slides. But if you could walk me through the top points for that, the first date on there is October 3, 2017. It's the collaborative meeting.
Yeah, so, we had the collaborative meeting on that date. Then, we submitted the preliminary application on October 23, 2017. We submitted the retail SDP application on November 22?
That's correct. November 22, 2017, is what it reads.
Okay, so then, that was the retail SDP application. And we, the first available date that we were given for preliminary application meeting was December 5, 2017.
And then, the next slide on here, Commercial Office, Block C, SDP application. Again, can you walk us through that top part of the timeline?
Yes. So, collaborative meeting on October 26, 2017. Submitted the preliminary, I think that's the preliminary land use application, on November, I can't see the date.
November 9, 2017.
9, 2017. And then, had a preliminary application meeting on December 12, 2017.
So, we'll come back to each of these in a lot more detail as we move along this evening. But I'd like to switch gears now to talk a little bit about, going back in time to the history of this property with Shelter. You said that you came to Shelter in April of 2015, but you've worked on this project ever since that point. So, are you fairly familiar with events that happened before April 2015 as well?
Yes, generally.
So, can you describe the process of Shelter, or IHIFC particularly acquiring this process, starting roughly back in October of 2013?
Yes. So, this property was part of 63 acres that was formerly owned by Microsoft. So, in 2013, an entity called Izaqua Highlands Investment Fund, LLC, acquired the whole 63 acres from Microsoft. At that time, our founders of Shelter were also the owners of Polygon Homes. And so, the whole 63 acres was acquired by one of their entities. In 2014, Polygon Homes was sold to William Lyon Homes, which is a national home. So, in connection with that sale of Polygon, the property was split. And the 21 and 1/2 acres that are subject of our plat and our applications was retained by a Shelter entity, while the rest of it went to Polygon and has, is in process of being developed by Polygon.
And so, when did IHIFC, the subsidiary of Shelter Holdings, acquire the property?
I believe it was in August of 2014, and it was in connection with that sale of Polygon Homes.
When IHIFC acquired the property, what were some of the expectations of what it was acquiring in that transaction? What's some of the stuff that came with it?
Well, it acquired all of the entitlement that had been purchased from Microsoft. So, the Microsoft property had roughly 1.2 million square feet of commercial development under the development agreement associated with that property. So, when the 63 acres were divided into the 21 acres that IHIFC has, and the Polygon property, all of the development right and the entitlement right went with the, went to Shelter with our property. The Polygon property acquired separate development rights for residential use from Port Blakely, who was the master developer.
And so, that, those entitlements, is that the same thing as allowable development?
Yes, in part. So, under the development agreement, there was a defined term allowable development, and the master developer could allocate that out to each parcel pursuant to the development agreement. And so, I guess when I talk about entitlement, I'm talking about both the allowable development and all of the other rights under the development agreement.
What are some of the other rights that were part of that allowable development?
So, a big piece of it would be mitigation. So, the, and the fact that the environmental review, or SEPA, was already done for all of the development in the Highlands. So, part of that meant that the master developer had provided mitigation upfront to offset the impacts of the total development under the development agreement. So, then, when they sold the properties and the allowable development, or the development rights, the purchase prices for those, for those sales reflected that the entitlement went with it, and that included the mitigation that had already been provided.
And so, and that's because you're receiving the benefit of that mitigation that was already provided?
Right. So, in other contexts, you would pay certain mitigation fees or impact fees for development as each project moved forward. In the case of Izaqua Highlands, that was all provided upfront. So, and there's some nuances to that, that there was some additional development that was added in at a later date, not at the beginning. And they paid, rather than paying zero for certain impact fees, there was a reduced amount. But as a general matter, the mitigation and impact fees were already paid or already provided. So, the, each developer got the benefit of that and paid for that as they purchased the property.
What sorts of things does mitigation include? Can you just describe a couple of examples?
Sure. The easiest examples to think about are the infrastructure, so roads and things like the fire station, and the water system, and the sewer system, that kind of thing.
How about the SEPA process and any environmental impact statements? Is that part of mitigation that was done already?
Yeah. So, when the master developer did the development agreement, they did a full environmental impact statement. And so, from a developer's perspective, there's value to having already had your environmental review conducted, because that's a piece of the, otherwise part of the entitlement process.
And we were talking a little bit about the timelines in Appendix L earlier. How did the timelines and processing standards in the development agreement tie into this?
So, one of the benefits of being under the development agreement was that there was an expedited process for review of permits.
And so, was that part of the benefit that came with this property?
Absolutely. So, that's when I'm referring to like the other, the other portions of the development agreement. That would be a big one that is important.
So, I think as we've walked through some of the stuff, we've touched on the entitlements, allowable development, which is tied to, and similar to entitlements, mitigation, the fact that SEPA and the environmental impact statement had already been completed, the timelines and processing requirements in the development agreement, and then also the certain amount of allowable development that you were describing. Those are kind of the big-picture benefits that came with this property.
Yes.
So, going back to allowable development, you'd mentioned that when IHIFC first acquired the property, it included roughly 1.2 million square feet of commercial entitlements. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so, did IHIFC purchase additional entitlements?
We did. In 2015, I believe, the end of 2015, we acquired the remaining development rights, or allowable development, that Port Blakely, the master developer, still held. So, that was roughly, I think it was roughly 650,000-ish square feet of development. 225,250 of those square feet were retail development. And then, there were also three residential units.
And just, my notes indicate it was roughly 2,225,500 in retail square feet. Does that sound...
That sounds right, yeah.
Correct? And 350,000 in commercial square feet?
Yes.
And then, the three units of residential that you said?
Yes.
Were you here for Director Niven's testimony when he stated that IHIFC did not have entitlement for residential uses on its property?
Yes.
Is that accurate?
No.
After IHIFC acquired the property, that was roughly in 2014, mid-2014, what did it start to do in order to develop the property? What steps was it starting to take?
So, I think, starting from they acquired the property, but when they were in discussions with the previous owner, they came in and started conversations with the city, talking about both wanting to do the residential, like you're seeing Polygon is now doing, and also talking about the possibility of doing mixed use and other uses on the portion that Shelter now owns. The city, at some points, or I think points is probably the most accurate way to describe it, asked Shelter, or Polygon, to give, or donate, or reserve portions of its property for a potential college or university site that the city wanted to pursue. At various times, I think that that ranged from an ask of 10 acres to an ask of up to 30 acres, and that the city felt like they should get that, either for free or at below-market rate, in exchange for allowing other uses on the IHIFC, or Izaqua Highlands Investment Fund properties.
And what is your understanding of how that demand from the city turned out? What did Shelter do with that?
I think that there was a lot of back and forth, and... And Shelter really tried to come to agreement with the city about something that would work. Eventually, it became apparent that bringing a college campus to Isaguah Highlands was not a viable use and was not something that Shelter was comfortable moving forward with. And so, in September of 2014, Gary Young and Eric Evans of Shelter delivered the message to the city that that was not something that we were going to be able to move forward with.
And just a couple clarifying points there. So, who is Gary Young?
Gary Young is one of the co-founders and owners of Shelter Holdings.
And he's with us here tonight?
Yep. He's sitting right there in the audience.
And then, how about Eric Evans? Who is he?
Eric Evans is part of our development team at Shelter Holdings.
And you mentioned that these events were taking place in 2014. So, that was before your time at Shelter. But you have knowledge from conversations with people and from being in this position. Is that fair?
Correct. So, when I started with Shelter Holdings and started working on this project, there was obviously a ton of history to get up to speed on. And so, I read through everything that we had as far as notes and documents and talked to everybody that had been involved and have specific notes from that meeting in September, when that message was delivered.
And what is your understanding of the reaction from the city when Shelter said that they couldn't be gifting or donating property?
My understanding was that Director Niven was very upset. And so, on behalf of the city at that meeting, it was Director Niven, Bob Harrison, who was then city manager, I believe, and then-mayor Fred Butler. And so, my understanding was that Bob Harrison and Keith Niven were very upset and angry at Gary.
Moving forward in time, what happened after you came on, or I guess when you were coming into the company in April of 2015? Where were things at with development plans?
So, at that point, after that meeting, delivering that message, I think there was a time period where it didn't feel like any discussion with the city was going to be productive. When I came on, we were in the phase of needing to reevaluate what could happen on this property. We knew that there had always been talk of it being office or an office campus, because Microsoft had owned the property. But, you know, our gut and real estate knowledge was telling us that that's not realistic here. So, what we did was we engaged experts to tell us, "Look at all the uses that could be here and tell us what makes sense, what's viable, what will both be economically viable so that you could actually build it and would get market interest." So, we hired Kinzer Partners, who also has a particular expertise in locating corporate headquarters and helping large companies plan for their space needs. And so, we felt like they were particularly qualified to help us evaluate whether that was a viable option. So, we had them look at office, medical office, retail and residential uses. And they prepared reports for us on the projected market demand on our site for each of those uses. So, we were really in the phase of reevaluating. At that point, when I came on, we were reevaluating what could happen here and then, how do we move that forward?
Do you recall what the outcome was of that Kinzer study in terms of what viable uses might be?
Yes. So, and just going from memory here, the rough numbers. So, there was definitely huge demand for residential, which everybody knew that there's lots of demand there. And then, there was also some demand. So, when you get into office, it was their conclusion was that it was unlikely that it would be a corporate headquarters site, given the fact that, at that point in time, you had Expedia announcing their move into downtown Seattle. People were really pushing, as far as corporate headquarters go, people were pushing away from the suburbs into the cities, in large part because of attracting workers and sort of trying to draw in the millennial workforce. So, that corporate headquarters was an unlikely user of our property. The office market, I think, they looked at the East Side office market over, I think it was like a 12- or 15-year period, and said there was like 6.5 million square feet of new office space built in the Greater East Side market, and that when you looked at Isaguah, there was zero in that same time period. So, what that tells you is either there's no demand or the cost of construction just can't justify, the rents can't justify the cost of construction. So, they didn't feel like office was going to be a really likely use there. And I think the projections were, you know, by 2040, making some sort of aggressive assumptions, maybe you could get to 250,000 square feet of office. But we were sitting there with 1.8 million square feet of development. So, that didn't feel like a real great number to really build a strategy for development around. Medical office is a subset of the office market, and it's a little bit different. And there, you know, was some demand for it, particularly being near Swedish Hospital. So, but again, the numbers weren't high as far as compared to the total maximum development there.
So, after that timeframe, and that was in 2015 roughly?
Yeah.
Did you start meeting with the city again after that?
We did. I don't recall the exact dates, but I think it was at the end of 2015, in December of 2015, we submitted a request to the city for either a development agreement or an amendment to our development agreement. Basically, we were wanting to start a discussion about, you know, we have this really great piece of property in the middle of Isaguah Highlands, and we all need to figure out what makes sense here and what's viable.
So, you say a development agreement or an extension. So, would that be a new development agreement or an extension of the existing one?
Yeah. Either one.
And was there any concern at that time about the vesting language or what vested rights meant under the existing development agreement for Isaguah Highlands?
No, not at all.
So, what was the purpose behind maybe seeking an extension or thinking about a new development agreement for Shelter's property specifically?
Well, we had 1.8 million square feet of entitlement that was planned for that site and market studies that were not indicating enough demand for that in the short term unless we were converting to residential. So, we were just, you know, taking a big-picture, long-term look at the property. And we thought that's what made sense. And we thought the city would also think that makes sense to collaboratively plan a large property like this in the middle of a master plan.
So, it sounds like you started discussions with the city maybe end of 2015, early 2016. Let's talk a little bit about those meetings. And if you need to reference your notes as we go along, please feel free to do so.
Okay.
The first meeting that I want to talk about is one that happened on January 21, 2016. Can you describe for me what happened in that meeting? First of all, who attended that meeting?
Chairman, can I please interject? My understanding is the city was going to be receiving copies of these materials that you're referring to throughout the presentation. Is that still going to happen?
We're providing copies of the exhibits for the record, but we're not proposing to submit the meeting minutes as exhibits.
Thank you. We would object to the continued use of those materials. If they're not going to be made exhibits, we will have nothing to refer to apart from Ms. Heim's oral testimony. If they'd like to submit those materials into evidence, we'd be happy to review them there. But we're at a loss and disadvantaged for purposes of our understanding and cross-examination without actually having copies.
If I may, we have copies of them that we can share. We're not planning to make them exhibits or introduce them into evidence, but we can share them with you if you would like to reference them.
Good, please. Thank you.
All right. So, let's turn first back to that January 21, 2016, meeting. I had asked about the attendees of that meeting. Can you please explain who was there?
Yes. So, it was me and Gary Young and Eric Evans from Shelter Holdings. And it was Keith Niven on behalf of the city.
And so, there's a lot of, you know, detailed notes that you took. But on page two of your notes, you talk about the Kinzer research. So, did you present the research that you were just describing to me to the city?
We did. I think we provided like an executive summary page of the studies. And then, we also had the full studies there with us. But Keith didn't seem particularly interested in receiving that information.
And so, what indications did you get from Director Niven about how the city might react to just the data that you were presenting to them? You mentioned maybe not too enthusiastic. Did they indicate an intent to work with staff going forward on this?
On the market research? Or what do you mean?
Just on evaluating different development proposals for this property.
Yeah. At the initial meetings like this one, there, he was attempting to lay out what the process would be if we wanted to pursue a development agreement or an extension or an amendment or whatever variation we landed on.
And so, did you also provide some information on traffic studies here? It sounds like, from your notes, it looks like Transpo had done a detailed analysis of traffic counts.
Yes.
And it's okay if you need a minute to review your notes?
Yeah. Sorry. I'm just reading through them, trying to make sure I remember this right. So, we had Transpo look at what shifting some of the commercial to residential would do from a traffic standpoint. And they had found that generally the infrastructure was sufficient to support a conversion of some of that. So, we did share that with Director Niven.
And so, moving on then, the next time you met with the city, was that about a month later, on February 1, 2016? I'm sorry. And that, actually, the timing that I gave you would be wrong. It was actually pretty shortly after, a few weeks on February 1 of 2016.
Right. February 1, 2016. Again, Gary, Eric and I met with Keith Niven.
And what, in general, was the purpose of that meeting? And it's okay if you need a second to review your notes before you answer.
Yeah. It was follow-up on the previous meeting. So, it was to continue to work through, how do we move this project or a development agreement, some form of development agreement, forward?
Looking at your notes here, one, two, three, four, five bullet points down, what did Keith explain in terms of what would happen if you did or didn't do a new development agreement?
He basically said that if we didn't extend or do a new development agreement, then, when the development agreement ended, that the city would give us our traditional zoning designation for our property.
Did he know what that was going to be?
No. He said he wasn't sure what that would be.
And but did that change anything about what the development agreement said about vested rights or how vesting worked?
About the existing development agreement?
Correct.
No, not at all. All of these discussions were about either future amendments or new development agreement and really didn't impact anything that was in the development agreement currently. And we never had any concern that that was at risk.
And then, it looks like a few weeks later, you met with the city again on February 25 of 2016. Is that correct?
Yes. February 25, 2016.
And who attended this meeting?
At this meeting, it was again Gary, Eric and myself. And this time, Keith brought with him Emily Moon.
And who is Emily Moon? What was her role at the city at that time?
I think she was Assistant City Administrator. And she was relatively new to the city at that point, I believe.
Did Keith, and I'm looking down at the second bullet point here of your notes, did he indicate anything about the progress on your conversations with the city about, you know, how you might go forward with developing the property?
Yeah. He acknowledged that we had, quote, "been held hostage at the starting gate", as he was struggling to figure out how to get us to a point of having the administration support. So, a lot of the discussion in the initial meetings sort of centered around what big thing, what public benefit could we provide that would entice council and the city administration to support looking at a different plan for our property?
So, he said that you'd been held hostage at that time. But it sounds like, from what you were describing earlier, that Shelter had been doing quite a bit to try to figure out what to do with its property by this point. Is that a fair summary?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we had done all of the research about what was viable. And so, now, we were trying to figure out how do you get the city engaged and get a process in place for pursuing some development that made sense?
So, did Keith talk at all in that meeting, the February 25, 2016, meeting, about the need for public support and what that might look like?
We did. That was another element, I think, that probably came up at multiple of the early meetings. And what Keith and Emily both encouraged us to do was that if we wanted to pursue something that was, quote, "not the original vision" for the property, that we needed to go to the community and get their input and get their support. And that was going to be a necessary step in any process.
Did Shelter go out and get community support or evaluate community support?
We did. So, we did extensive community outreach and support initially. Let's see. Let's see, it would have been in 2017, I think, May 2017, we had our first open house. We hosted up at Blakely Hall. And we brought all of our consultants that had helped us do the research and planning on the viability of different uses. And we brought our architecture and planning team and our landscape architects. And we presented the market data as far as what could be supported up there. And then we asked the community to help us, give us their feedback on what they wanted to see in the middle of their community. And we got a ton of feedback. And then we took that feedback and that market research, and we went and we developed a plan for mixed-use development across the 21 acres that involved residential over-retail, underground parking, additional parking for the park-and-ride, medical office, and some other commercial uses. But it did have a large residential component to it, so it would involve a fairly significant change in land use from what had been allocated under the development agreement. So we had the initial meeting, the initial open house, then we came back with the plan and presented that and took feedback there. And then we went the next step to have focus groups where we, again, had our consultants that were experts in certain areas, have smaller group discussions with people who self-selected to come to help give us feedback on what was important to the community.
So a moment ago in your explanation, you mentioned a May 2017 date. Would that, given that we're in 2016 for the February meeting with the city, was it 2016 that that?
Oh, sorry, it probably was 2016.
So, okay, so the first meeting would have been roughly May of 2016. And then you had all this public outreach to follow up?
Yes.
Roughly, how long did that process go on for, from February of 2016 to?
Until early fall of 2016, at which point we went back to the city and showed them our plan and got feedback from the mayor and the administration that they were not interested in seeing or hearing anything else about it, and that they felt that all the feedback that we had received was negative, and we should just focus on the uses that were allowed under the development agreement, because that was, those were the only things that they were open to. So obviously, that was kind of a big blow to something that we had spent so much time and so much energy on. But we took that feedback and we did just that. We switched gears. We said, okay, well, we don't, there's not a market for 1.8 million square feet of commercial anything, but let's look at what we can do up there with the entitlement that we do have that's consistent with the development agreement. And that's what sort of launched the plat followed by the site development permits that are in front of you.
Do you agree, a minute ago you characterized the response from the city as saying that there wasn't public support, or the public wasn't supportive, I'm paraphrasing. Do you agree with that?
I don't agree with the way that they characterized it. I think for any significant, land use project of significant size, there's always people on both sides. And the people that show up to the city to tell them what they think are always the people that are opposed. So were there people opposed? Yeah, there were. And were there people that supported it? Absolutely. So I don't think it's fair to say that it was not supported by the community.
As a general matter for Shelter, is it your experience that Shelter tries to get some community support and fit its developments into the existing community?
Absolutely. Out of all of the developers that I've worked for in my career, or worked with in my career, the importance of fitting into the community and supporting the community that Shelter places on its developments is unparalleled. Nobody else spends the time and effort to engage with the community and support community organizations and really be an integral part of a community in the way that Shelter does.
So after the February of 2016 meeting on the 25th, it looks like you met with the city again in May of 2016, May 18th, 2016. Do you recall who was at that meeting?
So that meeting was Keith Niven, Lucy Sloman, Gary Young, Eric Evans, and myself.
What was the purpose of that meeting?
Let's see. Well, one of the purposes was to, the city wanted to brief us on how they were going to approach the end of the development agreement that they were referring to as end of days.
If you turn to the last page of your notes, the second bullet point down, can you explain what Ms. Sloman said in that meeting about building on Shelter's property?
Sure. So she told us that building on our land was too easy, and that the staff was concerned that then that would mean a delay in development on the valley floor. And they still weren't seeing the development within that central area, urban core, which was anticipated by the Central Issaquah Plan. And they didn't want to dilute the focus on getting development in that area of the city.
So just to clarify geographically, the Highlands is kind of up on the plateau area of Issaquah. Where is this valley floor and urban core? Is that the same area?
Yeah, so the valley floor is, I think, basically most of Issaquah that's not up on a hill, if that makes sense.
Did Director Niven at this meeting, did he have anything to say about the market research that Shelter had done?
Yeah, he told us that he didn't care about it, and he didn't want to hear anything else about it, and so we shouldn't bring it up again.
So it looks like you met again, Shelter met again with the city in July of 2016, July 6th, 2016. Who was at that meeting?
At that meeting on July 6th of 2016, it was Lucy Sloman, Keith Niven, Doug Schlep, Eric Evans, and myself.
Who's Doug Schlep?
He is the city engineer, although I think he's actually a consultant to the city.
What was the purpose of this meeting?
I think the primary purpose of the meeting initially was to discuss these easements. There are some old stormwater easements that run across our property and polygons that aren't used anymore. And so we were talking about what to do with those was sort of the primary purpose. But we also had an update on where the city was at with planning for the eventual end of the development agreement.
Had any progress been made on that planning?
No, at that meeting, Lucy told us that no real progress had been made on what the process was going to be, or what the zoning would look like.
And we heard earlier that you'd started the public outreach efforts in May of 2016. And so this meeting is following after that. After this time, had you continued that public outreach? Is this roughly the timeframe that you were doing focus groups and other things?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact date when we went back for the second open house where we shared the plan, but it would have been around this date, possibly a little bit after.
Then you met with the city again, it looks like, in September, on September 21st of 2016. Who was at that meeting?
That meeting was Keith Niven, Lucy Sloman, Patrick Mulaney, who is our outside council on land use, excuse me, Gary Young, Eric Evans, and myself.
What did Keith say about the timing of the existing development agreement? Did he indicate what was going to happen to it? And looking down at the bottom of page one there, it looks like the last bullet point.
Oh, yeah. So as we continue to talk about their plan for ending the development agreement, Keith told us that they were going to, quote, "kill the development agreement next year," and that that was a priority of the staff to ease the administrative burden of applying the development agreement.
Looking at page two here, what did Keith have to say about mitigation under the development agreement as the city was planning to kill the development agreement?
At that meeting, he told us that our mitigation would, quote, "evaporate and disappear." But then he kind of went on to acknowledge that he knew that the city couldn't really make landowners pay for something that they had already paid for, so that they probably would need to acknowledge some number of vested trips in the overlay that they were planning. But then he said something about the trips being directional only, which wasn't really clear to us what that meant. But the overlay that he referred to was, at that point, I think it was at this meeting that they had introduced the idea that they had for the new zoning that they would eventually adopt. And it was to, the strategy was to mimic the development agreement, was sort of the terminology that they kept using, and that they would roll the allowable development that each parcel had into an overlay that was parcel-specific, so that each parcel would have an overlay that applied to it that showed what the maximum allowable development was on that parcel.
So going back to this statement in your notes, it says, the city, that Keith, Director Niven, had said, "The city can't make landowners pay again something that the landowner has already paid for." Is that correct?
Yes.
Was Director Niven's statement that your mitigation will evaporate and disappear consistent with your understanding of what the development agreement requires?
No.
Is mitigation under the development agreement, do you understand it to mean, to be part of what is vested with the development agreement?
Yes, the development agreement is very specific that in its definition of development standards to which you vest, it includes mitigation.
Looking at page three of your notes, it looks like the fifth bullet point down, what was Director Niven's description of what would happen to Shelter's property in the city's vision?
He said that he thought council was invested in the commercial designation for the property, and that if that, if we didn't move forward with that, that the council members were willing to let our property sit undeveloped until that vision could be accomplished. And in the context of the research that we had shared, that was him telling us that it was fine with them to have it sit till 2040 and beyond.
And then going just a little bit further down in your notes here, did the city staff indicate whether they would support Shelter's proposal for a mixed-use development?
Yes, at this meeting, they told us, or Keith told us, that the staff does not and will not support our proposal for a mixed-use development. And then he went on to say that that was in part because Shelter had refused the city's past overture to tie up Shelter's property for five years while the city attempted to market it to a college or university. And he sat there and looked at Gary and told him that if he had just made a different decision, the five-year period would be running and the application would be treated differently. It was really pretty shocking statement for me to hear.
When you refer to a five-year period that would be running, what's that referencing?
It was referencing a request that the city had made that we grant them a five-year option on the property to go try to look for an institutional user, a college or university. And they wanted that option at no cost, and then an ultimate sale to be at below market, below fair market value.
Was that part of the package of gifts or donations or various different things that were being considered that you mentioned earlier?
Yes.
And just for the record, will you please read that bullet point into the record?
Sure. It says, "Staff does not and will not support Shelter's proposal for a mixed-use development, in part because Shelter refused the city's past overture to tie up Shelter's property for five years while the city attempted to market it to an institutional user. Keith mentioned that had Shelter made a different decision, the five-year period would have almost run by now, and the staff might have looked more favorably on Shelter's proposal."
Thank you. And then turning to page four of your notes, the third bullet point down, will you just read that bullet point into the record, please?
Yes. So it says, "Patrick questioned what will happen to projects vested under the DA," meaning the development agreement. "Keith said that if a project is vested under the DA, it will remain vested for the term of the vesting permit. Lucy pointed out that once zoning changes, the permits do not have to be extended."
Keith never mentioned anything about divesting under the development agreement in this meeting?
No, not at all.
Anything about permanent vesting?
Nope, I hadn't heard that term until this hearing.
So is this description that you just read, that if a project is vested under the DA, it will remain vested for the term of the vesting permit, is that consistent with your understanding of the development agreement and what it requires?
Yes.
It looks like the next time that you met with the city was on October 27th, 2016. Who was at this meeting?
At the October 27th, 2016 meeting, it was Gary, Keith, and myself.
If you go down to roughly the middle of the page, what did Mr. Niven have to say about development, kind of the atmosphere of development in the Issaquah Highlands at that time? Was the city supportive or anti-development?
At this point, they were not supportive of anything other than what they always referred to as the original vision, so commercial use of our site. He, Keith, told us that in the city right now at that time, anything that is seen as supportive of development is poison, and the city will not take any position in support of development in this environment.
So be viewed as poison to be tried, to try to develop your property at this time?
Yes, that's what he told us.
Council, could I interrupt for a moment? We've been going for a while. Would it be a reasonable time to take a short break to?
Happy to take a break.
All right. Why don't we come back in about 10 minutes?
Thank you.
All right, we're back in session. I would like to try to keep our constraint to about 10 o'clock. That's kind of what our agreements were, so if we can do that, that'd be great.
Sure, I will try to watch the time and if I start to overrun, just flag me down.
I'll do it.
All right, so Tia, when we paused for the break, we left off talking about the October 27, 2016 meeting. Turning to the second page of your notes there, it's actually at the very bottom of the page. What did Director Niven have to say about your residential units?
At that meeting, he told us that the three residential units would evaporate because it would be too complicated for him to try to figure out how to allow them when they were planning to restrict our property so that it could not be developed for residential use.
And just going back to something that you had said before, and to clarify, you had three residential units that Shelter had paid for.
Correct.
Turning to the next time that you met with the city, which I have is November 10 of 2016. Who attended this meeting?
This was actually a little bit of a different meeting. Gary and I had reached out to council members to try to get them to engage in conversation with us about what they wanted to see and what they were open to seeing on our property. So this meeting on November 10, 2016 was actually a meeting with then-council member Mary Lou Polly and council member Mariah Batiste.
And just in general, what did you discuss in this meeting?
Hang on just a second, let me refresh my memory. So I think what we discussed was our mixed-use proposal that we had developed with the community input. And then we talked about potential avenues for moving forward with development on our property. We were asking them for feedback.
You have here about halfway down the page, it looks like the eighth bullet point down. Your notes mention a sense of urgency. Can you explain what you meant by that?
Sure, so... They had mentioned that the city has a major bandwidth issue as far as staff goes at that point in time because of the moratorium. So I think at that point, the moratorium was relatively new and they were developing the work plan to try to get out of the moratorium or to develop the path out of the moratorium. And so from their perspective, meaning Mary Lou Polly and Mariah Batiste's perspective, the staff resources were rightly focused on moratorium-related issues. And they had cited that as reason for just not dealing with our property at that moment in time. So when I started talking about urgency of the issue, it was related to those comments that they had made.
And just so that there's the context in our record, what was the moratorium that you're referencing?
The city of Issaquah had a moratorium on other portions of the city, but it did not apply in any of the areas that were governed by development agreements.
And when you mentioned the need to have more certainty in your notes, was there any question at this time about your vested rights under the development agreement? Did this change anything about your understanding of what the development agreement meant?
No, not at all.
So no concern about vested rights at this time?
No, no concern about vested rights. When I reference certainty, I think, you know, at this point, we knew that the development agreement would end and that there would be replacement regulations, but at this point, the city had no real... There were no draft replacement regulations. We didn't really know what that meant yet. So when you're talking to potential end-users about coming to your site or signing a long-term lease or any of that stuff, they want to know that you have the ability to perform and to develop your property in the way that you're planning and anticipating. So when I reference needing certainty, that's what I mean.
And this is before you had submitted your current applications that are pending?
Correct.
So you were exploring different options at that time?
Right.
It looks like you met again with the city a couple days later, on November 14, 2016. Who was at that meeting?
So that meeting was Keith Niven, Gary Young, Patrick Malaney, and myself.
If you could go one, two, three, four, or five bullet points down the page. Will you read that fifth bullet point, please?
It says, "Keith went on to point out that with vesting available under the current DA," which is a reference to the development agreement, "there is no gap between DA and new zoning." And that the moratorium work plan indicates that the city will have lifted the moratorium before the end of DA's.
And that the "gap" is in quotations, is that intended to be a direct quote?
Yes.
So what did you take that to mean, that there's no gap between the DA and the new zoning?
One of the ideas that we had discussed with Mary Lou Polly and Mariah Batiste was just extend the development agreement as-is. If you don't feel like you have the staff resources to do any real planning on this now, just extend it as-is with respect to our property. You can still wrap it up and terminate all the rest of Issaquah Highlands if that's what you want to do, but let's just do a simple amendment to extend. And it allows us to just have some additional long-term certainty to point to for end-users when we're trying to market the property. And so when... And the council members had had a somewhat positive reaction to that, but they said they needed to get Keith's take on it. And when we raised it with Keith, he didn't like that idea at all. And so this was him explaining to me why I didn't need that because all I had to do was use the vesting provision under the development agreement.
And if you used the vesting provision under the development agreement, is that what you're referring to, is there's no gap between the DA and the new zoning?
Right. And at this point, again, they were... They, being the city, were telling us and everyone that the idea was to mimic the development agreement. And so it would basically be codifying the regulations that were in the development agreement.
But did they end up actually doing that in reality?
No, they significantly changed the regulations with respect to our property.
And really, should that matter if vesting works the way that it was intended to?
Not at all. I mean, vesting means that if you have an application that was submitted prior to the regulations going into effect, that you're vested to the old regulations, which in this case are the regulations under the development agreement. Because those were the only regulations that existed at the time we submitted the applications.
So using Director Niven's language, there'd be no gap?
Correct.
And then going down a little bit further in your notes, did Director Niven say anything about how the vesting date's determined in Issaquah?
Yes, so reading from my notes, it says, "Keith said that the city attorney has determined that in Issaquah, the vesting date is pre-application date, not complete application." And then mentioned that he just hasn't gotten around to writing that determination down yet. And so when I reference "not complete application," I don't mean that the pre-application is incomplete, I just mean not the full application.
And so that pre-application date, that's the packet of... The application packet that you were talking about earlier that is more extensive in Issaquah than in other places?
Right, I think it's referred to as the preliminary land use application.
And that you described as essentially equivalent to doing a complete or a full land use application?
Yes.
And then turning to... What would be the third page of your notes here. About five bullet points down. Did Director Niven have anything to say about your residential units of entitlement in this meeting?
Which bullet point were you referencing?
I'm looking at the third page of your notes. The fifth bullet point.
At this meeting, he told us that our three residential units of entitlement would either go away or be converted to commercial use because they can't allow any residential in the zoning.
Is that something that you were requesting for your residential entitlement to go away?
No, the opposite. We were insisting that that... Despite the fact that three residential units is not a lot, that it was still an important aspect of our entitlement to us and something that we had paid value for.
You'll have to bear with me, I keep getting locked out even though I'm convinced my password is right. Okay, so I'm going to bring up an exhibit that is already in the record at S-14. And let me grab a copy for you, Tia.
Okay. Jackie, are they over here?
Right, can you describe what S-14 is?
This is an entitlement memo that was sent to Nick Abdalnor of Polygon and Gary Young of Shelter, and it was from Lucy Sloman at the city.
And looking at that first paragraph there, and actually, before we get to this point, why in general do you understand this to have been prepared?
So my understanding is that there are several iterations of this memo that were drafted at various points in time. And that it attempts to summarize how different portions of entitlement are allocated between Polygon and Shelter and will be treated with respect to development proposals going forward.
And if you flip to the very last page of this, there's a signature block. Did anybody sign this?
Excuse me. Yes, this particular version of the memo is signed as approved by Lucy Sloman.
Did Shelter Holdings ever sign this?
We did not.
And going back to the first page of this memo, and that first paragraph at the end there. It talks about... The second sentence of that paragraph talks about the fact that these properties will be permitted under the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement using the following entitlement assumptions. And then it lists some entitlement letters. But then it also states at the end there, "using vesting requirements summarized by the DSD Director Keith Niven in a separate interpretation." Do you know what that separate interpretation is? Or what's your understanding of what that is?
My understanding of what that is, is the March 2017 letter to Nick Abdalnor of Polygon regarding vesting. When this memo came out, we reviewed it and provided some comments to Ms. Sloman. And one of our comments was a request for that separate vesting... How do they refer to it? Separate interpretation on vesting. And so we requested a copy of that. We didn't get a response from that, but the next thing that we saw come out of the city regarding vesting was that letter that was addressed to Nick Abdalnor. And since our property was subject to all the same regulations and potentially pursuing the same permits, our assumption has always been and continues to be that that interpretation applies to our property as well.
So you just mentioned that you had asked for a copy of Keith's vesting requirements interpretation. Are you aware that others had also asked for that interpretation around that time?
I'm aware that Polygon did.
So let's... I'm going to grab another exhibit, which this one is going to be new. Do you recall what number we left off on last? Twenty-six, thank you. So this would be 27? And so are you familiar with this document at S-27? Can you describe for us what it is?
It is an email string between John Rosenthal and Lucy Sloman with Sharon Peaty copied on it.
And if you go down to the original message on that first page, the December 6, 2016, I'll represent that it indicates that Saikan is the client of John Rosenthal. Are you familiar who Saikan is?
I believe that Saikan is the owner or associated with the City Surf site.
And then going back up to the top email in this chain, the 12/6/2016, 5:03. Can you read what Ms. Sloman told John Rosenthal about how vesting development rights would be addressed by the director?
Yes, so her email to John Rosenthal reads, "Vesting of someone's development rights under that agreement," which is referring to the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement, "will be addressed in a document to be prepared by the director of my department." You want me to keep going?
No, that's fine. So then a moment ago, you said that this vesting interpretation was the March 27, 2017 memo, which I believe is already in the record at S-13. Let's pull that up. So this is exhibit S-13. I'm going to grab a copy for you, Tia. So we've discussed this memo to some length in Director Niven's testimony and Ms. Sloman's testimony. If we turn to the very last page and paragraph of this, can you read that last paragraph, starting with requirements for a complete?
Sure. "requirements for a complete application necessary to vest are set forth by municipal code, IMC 18.01.050-C1 sets forth the requirements for a complete application. When an application is submitted meeting those requirements, the application is vested and would be unaffected by any future changes in zoning or development regulations so long as the application remains active." And then in parentheses, it has IMC 18.04.220.D.2. "This would include any changes as a result of termination of the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement."
Is this vesting interpretation consistent with your understanding of the development agreement?
Yes.
And so you understood this to be the entitlement memo that Lucy's memo was referencing and that both you and then John Rosenthal were asking for?
Yes, because it's the only thing that we ever saw that gave an interpretation of vesting with respect to projects in Issaquah Highlands under the development agreement.
I think we're going to... This last exhibit should just take a couple minutes and then we'll end on this note, given that it's 9:56.
Thank you.
So this will be exhibit S-28. Tia, will you please describe what this document is, S-28?
Yes, it is an email exchange between Keith Niven and Nick Abdalnor regarding vesting in the March 27, 2017 letter.
And just for the records for clarification, because he came up both in this and the prior memo, who is Nick Abdalnor?
He's an employee of Polygon Homes or William Malayan Homes. And I think he runs their entitlement.
And what document is attached to this email?
S-13, the March 27, 2017 letter.
Will you please read what Nick Abdalnor had to say to Keith Niven on June 29, 2017?
He wrote, "Keith, I know March was not long ago. Please confirm the attached letter confirms both preliminary plat and site development permit applications. When deemed complete, results in the applications being vested by the city." And Keith's response was yes.
And again, is this consistent with your understanding of the vesting requirements under the development agreement?
Yes.
Thank you. I think we can end on that note if you're ready to end for the evening.
I think we are. I'd like to thank everybody for their participation. I think we'll adjourn the meeting. We'll get back here, meet again tomorrow, 6:30, and start again, consider ourselves adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.